I call to order the Thursday, July nineteenth, meeting of the Los Altos Planning Commission. For the quorum record, let me show that everyone is here except Commissioner Duho Lee, who was absent. Let me start by saying, everybody, please turn off your phones. I just was at a concert yesterday where the violinist said, "Turn off your phone." And everybody did, and as she reached for her bow, the phone went off. So we won't do that here, I hope. If you want to speak, please fill out one of these yellow slips and pass it up here. Green slip, sorry, dead brain, colorblind day. Other than that, the first item on the agenda is public comments for items not on the agenda, for which I have John Seaman, who put in a green slip. Please step up to the dais and talk into the microphone so people can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is John Seaman. I live at 201 Valencia Drive at the corner of Valencia and Almond. I've lived there thirty-five years. My property shares a back fence with the high school. It's right near the parking lot area. So why am I here? My wife and I received a letter in June from Superintendent Harding from the Los Altos Mountain View High School District, and they informed the neighbors that the high school is investigating and are considering stadium lights for the high school field. They'll probably upgrade the P.A. system also at both schools, and they're going to consider this at the school board meeting on August thirteenth. So I've contacted several of my neighbors, and not all of them received this letter. So quite a few people nearby have not seen the letter. As you know, lights and associated P.A. systems and athletic fields have been considerable neighborhood issue around California. I know for a fact, because a few years ago, we had temporary lights for one game at Los Altos High, and the loud P.A. noise extended well into the night, caused nearby continuous heavy traffic, and left a considerable amount of trash. So what I'm asking is that when this topic comes up to be permitted, or variances or whatnot, I urge the city council to have a, and planning meeting, to have full public discussions, including neighborhood inputs. Some topics to resolve are hours and days of operation, keeping the P.A. system within the city noise limits, and regulating third-party uses. Comes to mind rock concerts in the middle of the night and so forth. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. Okay.
I have a staff question related to that.
Please do.
Zach, unlike the private schools, do public schools, I mean, is there any part of the oversight that would actually come through to us?
For anything that is K through twelve related, the city does not have any jurisdiction over that type of project.
So, follow-up question. If Mr. Seaman has concerns, he should go directly to the school board?
Yes, that is the public governing body that would most likely be making a decision on this type of topic.
Okay, thank you. So the next item on our agenda is consent calendar, which consists of minutes and the Los Altos Lutheran Church music program, which was on the previous meeting that got pulled forward to this one. So the first question is, does anybody on the dais want to pull item two for discussion as opposed to consent calendar? Okay, no. Wait, Anita.
I have a question about it, so I don't know whether I need to pull it to get my question answered or not.
I believe if it's to be discussed, we need to pull it off the consent.
If it's a quick clarifying question, you can ask it. If it requires more discussion, the most appropriate would be to pull it from consent.
Okay. My question is, as I read the pastor's letter, the music program is already operating. And so my question is, is the permit to allow essentially something that's already happening in part to go on because the music program's already operating? Or is the letter from the pastor in error? Or am I misreading it? Or?
I think the clarification is there is an existing music program. It's a different mix, and so it came back as a whole. So really, there is a program that's leaving, that's being displaced by a slightly larger program. But yeah, there is an existing music program there, to my understanding, but there's a new one that's part of this after-school program provided by a different provider. And given that it was an increase from what was previously, that's why the use permit, we required the use permit.
Okay, thank you. So I repeat my question. Do you want to pull that item for the discussion? No? Okay. So does anybody have any comments, corrections, or additions to put onto the minutes?
I have a question. I would be abstaining probably from those minutes because I wasn't at the meeting. But I was curious that twice, both the first action and then the fourth one, all but on the first page, talks about minutes were approved by three zero to three. That wouldn't, that's not a quorum, so technically, those minutes weren't approved? Or are those minutes, or are these minutes incorrect? Because you would need four. I was absent, so there's...
I was not at that meeting.
You were not at that meeting.
So we would need to go back and consult the minutes. You are correct if that was, in fact, the vote. Hopefully, it was, the correct one would be a four oh two, but we will check.
John said that because we had three and...
There were people who hadn't been there.
But hadn't been there, that there was something like, it was past, in the spirit of, it was close. I mean, it wasn't like yes or no, but it was that we were, that somebody's...
Was agreeable with the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
We asked that question.
And always, as a reminder, as commissioners, you do have the ability to vote on minutes, even if you weren't at the meeting.
Right.
To ensure that there is the appropriate number of votes to pass them.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or additions on the minutes? Can I have a motion, please, for the consent calendar?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining?
Oh, I'll abstain from the minutes. Though actually, I'm...
But you just, she can vote on the minutes.
I can vote on the minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
And I watched the meeting, so I feel comfortable approving, voting to approve those minutes.
Okay, so both of those items are approved. The next item on our list is eighteen UPO five, which is a use permit with Peter Ko as the architect at one five 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 Oak Avenue. Now, I have here in my hands, one, two, three, four, five, six requests to speak. Okay, I think we can give them three minutes then. Ten's sort of my cutoff point. So can we have a staff report first, and then we'll hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The item before you is a use permit request for the Foothill Covenant Church at fifteen fifty-five Oak Avenue. As you can see here, it is located adjacent to the Mountain View High School and is also adjacent to Oak Elementary. In addition, on the Foothill Covenant Church campus itself, you may recall, several years back, there was a use permit approved for the Mountain View Los Altos Parent Teacher Nursery School. And as you can see here, it is located on kind of the left side of your screen. It's those three portable units and associated play areas. So then that's in addition to the church activities itself. Both of the, the information on both of those uses is included in your staff report. So the item before you is Children's Corner Nursery School or Children's Corner Preschool. They are looking to relocate from the community center, which is scheduled, assuming that the new project is approved, to be demolished and rebuilt. So they are looking for a new home in light of their current location to be demolished here in the next few years. So what they are looking at is to occupy a portion of the church sanctuary, which is identified as Building One, and fully occupy the church building number two, and I may have incorrectly noted it as church building three in my staff report. It's the building more to the north, adjacent to the parking lot. And then also, there are two existing playgrounds behind the residence and between the two buildings that the nursery, the preschool would be seeking to occupy as well. So this, this school does have an enrollment limit of up to sixty, sixty students, and it will, it will likely have staff that is up to generally around fourteen employees. And so this would be a use permit to occupy an existing classroom and floor in the church facility with this new preschool use. As was noted in the staff report, and as you, you may have seen with the correspondence that the city received, one of the primary concerns related to this use permit is existing traffic and this proposed use contribution to that traffic. As part of the application, the city did require a traffic report, which was prepared, and I believe a representative for Hexagon is here tonight, along with the applicant, and can answer questions specifically. But they did look at the area, and specifically, they studied the signalized intersections at Grant and Oak and Grant and Bryant, which were anticipated to be the primary intersections used to access this facility. And in speaking further with the traffic engineer, if it wasn't clear in the traffic report, this is based on the, on the current enrollment for Children's Corner, which, which looks at most of the trips coming kind of from a northwesterly direction toward the site. So the majority of the traffic is anticipated to use either Bryant to Truman or Oak to Truman to access the site, with a small percentage using Truman to Fremont. But that's anticipated more as an exit, but the likely routes are those two, as were noted. And so based on the findings in the traffic report, given the amount of traffic and kind of this how it was spread throughout the day, it was not anticipated that there will be any, any, or there'll be a minimal reduction in service. I think at its worst, there would be about a one and a half second increase in delay at the Bryant and Grant intersection. While not specifically looking at or discussing the Oak, Truman, and Bryant streets, I did speak to the traffic engineer, and his explanation was that, based on the findings for level of service at the intersections, that would correlate to kind of the traffic that would then be traveling down the street. And then also, their anticipation, based on the fact that the pickups and drop-offs were spread throughout the day, there, there would be minimal increase at the peak hours, which are related to kind of when you have your pickup and drop-off times, but primarily your morning drop-off times for both Oak and, and the high school. So I've included some slides here. We can go back to them. This was provided by Children's Corner and kind of provides a range for when their families tend to pick up and drop off. It's my understanding they do not have a fixed schedule, so there is a range, and it varies family to family. Here is a bell schedule for the high school, so there is some variation, but really, if you're looking at the primary pickup and, or drop-off time, which is at zero or first period, it's really that seven fifteen to about eight ten, maybe a little bit later when you have your heaviest traffic in the morning. And that is also anticipated to be heaviest because that correlates with your general peak hour in the A.M. And then in the afternoon, you're looking at, in general, that two forty to three thirty window, or slightly thereafter, for when you've got your primary departures. Similar to Oak Elementary, you can see their, their start time is generally eight forty-five or eight thirty, and, and then it looks like you've got your school end in the two forty-five range. So as you can see with that, there is some overlap, but it's spread throughout the day, so you're not seeing sixty students being picked up or dropped off at the same times, and you're experiencing that peak traffic for, for either of the adjacent schools. However, staff did add a, since Oak Elementary is most adjacent and will likely have a lot of similar traffic on Oak Avenue, staff did include a condition, and this is similar to the Mountain View Parent Teacher Nursery School, that, that asked that Children's Corner adjust their schedule to minimize pickups and drop-offs during that kind of peak pickup and drop-off period for Oak Elementary. So being aware of Oak Elementary's school schedule and, and working with parents to minimize those pickups and drop-offs during that time. But overall, with this information, staff is recommending approval of the use permit as proposed. Included with it is, is additional information about Children's Corner, their detailed information on their pickups, drop-offs, as well as the traffic report. And as noted before, there, we did receive a number of letters from neighbors adjacent or nearby the school that were concerned about the traffic related. And we did also receive several letters in support, appearing primarily from people associated with the school or parents that attend the school, so that, that information is provided on the dais and was emailed to you as it was received. So other than that, I am available if you have any questions.
Questions for staff at this time?
Anita?
On the resolution attachment A, Zach, I just want to understand the second clause. Says it's exempt from environmental review as a multiple-family structure totaling no more than four residences. The space there certainly would accommodate more than four residences if it were a normal R one ten. Can you enlighten me?
My apologies. That is actually an incorrect reference, most likely carried over from a prior template. If you look on the cover page of the Planning Commission's staff report, environment, it is exempt pursuant to section fifteen three oh one, which is because it's the occupancy of an existing, and even there, it should be public facility building. But really, the, the key is it would fall under that fifteen three oh one exemption, which is because it's occupying existing floor area and, and not adding new floor area.
Okay, so the resolution has to get amended before anybody would take a formal action on it?
So this resolution is a draft, because this isn't a Planning Commission resolution, because ultimately, this is a city council action. So this, this is a draft of the resolution that will ultimately go to city council.
Right.
So we can definitely update it before it goes to city council to make sure it, it corrects that reference.
And is, I'm sorry, is there, the other question is, is there a time limit on the conditional use permit, or does it run as some others have done?
Use permits run with the land. So if you had a different operator, as long as their, the parameters of their use, and it would be a preschool, does not exceed the thresholds in this approval, they could be less but not more, then they would be allowed to pick that up. So really, the use permit runs with the land. But if the use changes or the use relocates, a new use permit is required.
Thank you.
Sally?
And I just, and this is not necessarily, well, it is a clarification. We have two resolutions for conditional use permits. One was in the consent calendar, and then this one now. And they were phrased and slightly differently formatted. I, I would have expected to see the more consistent, conditional use permit was only in this one, not the other in the title, et cetera, et cetera. So I would think that we would have, whatever the current up-to-date template is, I would have expected both those resolution, draft resolutions to look the same.
That is noted.
So when the resolution goes to city council, before it does, staff can go for a consistent template on whatever they're presenting?
Right, on both of those.
Questions from any, on this side?
I've got one.
Yes.
If the church were to operate it themselves, would they need? If the church were to operate it themselves, would they need any type of approvals?
If they were following the same parameters outlined in this use permit in terms of number of employees, hours of operation, and not exceeding that cap for number of students, it would run with the land. So if, if Children's Corner left, it would stay there, and so...
Sorry, let me clarify. As, as is, could the church start offering these types of services themselves if it was, you know, Sunday school class or whatever it was?
If, the key is, is that they need to demonstrate that it's consistent with the original use permit that was issued for the church. However, if they wanted to run a preschool or nursery school, daycare, anything like that, we would review it, and it would likely require either an amendment to the use permit or a new use permit for that use, because usually, use permits are related to the use. So we would go back and look at the kind of the scope of activities that were approved with the original church use permit and compare that to what they were proposing.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Is the applicant here or would like to make some comments? Would you like to make a presentation?
Good evening, all the planning commissioners. My name's Peter Ko. We're the architect for this project. Our office is located in Palo Alto. And we, three months ago, we got hired by the preschool to do this project. We have done several other projects in different cities for preschool facility. And we come in, talked to the preschool, and visit assisting facility on Hillview Community Center. And we also visited church and did the analysis of the building, and looked at the parking lot, and also building number two, which we're going to occupy most of the part of the classrooms there, and also the auditorium building, we're going to occupy where the church, Sunday school nursery area for the preschool as well. And we found, we found that at least the facility located in the church is very compatible use to the preschool, and every, the facility, everything there is very, just like a turnaround, it's very easy converting to use as a preschool. So we've been working with Zach to lay out the floor plans and work to, for the use of the classroom, and then the play area, all that stuff. Did the architectural site plan and floor plan. And then we have working with the traffic engineer to did the traffic study. And so we really thank Planning Department helping us to get to this level, come to the hearing today. And we have our traffic engineer here, if you guys have any questions or neighbors concerned, and she definitely can answer that. And also, the preschool principals are here as well. So thank you very much.
Questions for the applicant? No, thank you. I have six requests to speak. The first, I'm going to tell you who gets to speak, and then the next person be on board for the move fast. So it's Landwin. Landwin followed by Sitali Tolja. Okay? Sitali Tolja?
I'm sorry.
Okay. You're not going to speak either.
No, I've filled my time.
Okay. You can't, people aren't going to get your time, so if you, all right. The next one is Laura Bernal, followed by Susan.
Geis.
Geis, thank you. I thought it was a C. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Bernal. I'm the site director at Children's Corner and a teacher. Been there for thirty-three years. We are feeling very fortunate that the church is welcoming us, Hans Eric, and the people there, that we can continue to provide what I think is a wonderful educational process and developmental place for children to come grow and become competent children who want to kindergarten with social, emotional skills and ready for some of the rigors that are ahead. I, I really respect and validate the concerns of the neighbors. In my neighborhood, I would be concerned also, but I do believe that with our staggered arrivals and departures, that we would have a minimal effect on the neighborhood, and we really want to be a positive force in that neighborhood, working with the church and the surrounding families. So I really encourage all the support that we can have. We are sad to leave the community center. We've been there for like thirty-eight years. It's our home. It'll be a bittersweet ending, and we hope to have a wonderful beginning at the church. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
Hi, I'm Susan Geis, fifteen forty Oak Avenue, Los Altos, directly across the street from Foothill Covenant Church. Okay, so several years ago, they proposed to do the Mountain View Co-op preschool. We were deeply concerned about how it would impact the traffic of our neighborhood streets, and we expressed it, but it prevailed and it went in. Our concern this time is that there are more children being proposed to go to Children's Corner, and I want to say that I do respect what you do, and I am sorry for your plight.
You need to talk to the microphone, because otherwise...
I'm sorry, I do respect what they do, and I am sorry for their loss of Hillview Community Center, because I realize they are a longstanding community member, and they have done fine work. Okay? That being said, we are strongly opposed to the addition of any further development on this already strained area that sits between Oak Elementary School, YMCA Childcare Program, Foothill Covenant Church, with daily Alcoholics Anonymous meetings three times a day, seven days a week, parent nursery school, Mountain View High School, and Alta Vista High School. Now, I can tell you from firsthand experience, living on Oak Avenue directly opposite the church, it is impossible for me to get out of my driveway in the morning, and I mean gridlock bumper to bumper for protracted periods of time where you just sit there and go, okay, I guess I'll be late to work. All of these facilities that I just previously mentioned are overcapacity and bursting at the seams, especially Mountain View High School. The impact to traffic, which is already extremely congested with cars, bicycles, students on scooters, trying to negotiate, and, and foot, trying to negotiate these obstacles while walking to school is frightfully dangerous. The situation should not be burdened any further by adding an additional school. I'm asking you to please have consideration for this already negatively impacted traffic situation. We have accepted our share, more than our fair share, of most Los Altos communities, and our end of social responsibility through the Foothill Covenant Church, and been, you know, very supportive and very tolerant of all of their above-mentioned programs. I can tell you that I have been out there. They do not have a crossing guard on Oak and Truman. It is hair-raising. It is chaos. It is the wild, wild west. I have held my breath. I have screamed at cars. I have admonished people to slow down. They are not careful drivers. These are parents who are headed to work. They are dropping their children off. They are frustrated by the traffic. Thank you.
Next speaker is Darren Licardo, followed by Kesther Phong.
Good evening. I'm Darren Licardo, Los Altos resident, board member of Children's Corner. I'm raising a three-year-old and a six-year-old in Los Altos. I'm available to answer questions about the program. I think most of you know the history. We've been at Hillview for quite some time. We love to find a new, new spot to, to house our program. Thank you.
Question, just a minute.
I have a question. How is the staggering, how is that accomplished? Is that formal? Is it informal, just when people show up?
Yeah, it's informal. So unlike an elementary school, my daughter's in, in public elementary school, right? There's a bell. If you're tardy, you get a mark on your, on your report card. So there's a natural compression of, of drop-offs and pickups at the end of the day. It's similar, right? Very structured program. Our program is, is unstructured. Our, our parents sign up for a contract that gives them a, a range of hours of operation that they're allowed to bring their children to the program. But by no means are they required or marked as an attendance policy. These are two- to five-year-olds. So some days, I drop Jackson off at eight thirty, some days, I drop him off at nine fifteen. It really just depends on what I'm doing next. And I think that, that's sort of the norm for our parent community for this age kids.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. The last speaker is Kesther Phong.
Chairwoman Brasek and commission members, my name is Kesther Phong. I have lived at fifteen sixty Oak Avenue for twenty-eight years. My house is located at southwest corner of Oak and Truman, directly across from Foothill Covenant Church. On Monday last week, my wife and I were surprised by the Children's Corner use permit public hearing notice. Afterwards, we sent a letter of opposition to Mr. Dell. We canvassed neighbors to ask for their support. We reviewed the Planning Commission Agenda Report last Saturday and wrote a review disputing its findings, traffic analysis, and lack of safety consideration. Traffic analysis from the Agenda Report focuses on Grant Oak and Grant Bryant intersections. Both places have traffic lights and crosswalk guards during rush hours. In my view, and my neighbors as well, a proper study should have focused on Bryant Truman, Oak Truman, and Fremont Truman instead. All these intersections are dangerous places for children and drivers on a school day between seven forty-five and nine fifteen A.M. That's my personal experience. We canvassed Oak Truman and their side streets. The petition is a simple sentence stating objection to the project. We visited over one hundred houses, with eighty-five households signing the petition. Fifty of the households are in Los Altos and thirty-five in Mountain View. Most signees are concerned about traffic and safety. Some like the ideas of preschool, but... Some like the ideas of preschool, but prefer other locations be considered. So, it's not against the preschool, per se. You can say our neighbors strongly agree with us. Please read my review comments for details before you resolve this project. I will be most happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Fong at this time? Do we have a copy of this petition?
Yes, our petition is included with a cover letter in your, in the public letters of our study.
So, it's in the bundle? It was on the dais?
Yes, it is. It's covered sheet, it's like this, it's an introduction.
Okay.
It's the only cover letter that's saved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fong. Okay, I have no other requests to speak, so I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we can talk.
Can I go first?
Yes, you can go first. Thank you for all the hearing.
So, I'd like to provide some information, because I used to live in this neighborhood very much. And I was disappointed not to see that Truman wasn't studied as far as traffic goes, because most of the people leaving that area go down Truman, turn left on Fremont, and get on eighty-five. And that backs up on Fremont Street significantly. It's tough to get out from this other neighborhoods onto Fremont. So, I was disappointed not that that didn't happen. Also, I know that from experience of counting students in Los Altos, Oak School has the highest number of students that are riding their bikes to school, as well as Mountain View High and Block. And my kids went to all three schools. So, I have a concern with traffic in that area, but because I don't think Oak and Bryant are the main vehicles to get to and from that location. I would like to see, and I don't know, well, I just provide the information. So, there's a lot of kids, high school students, that come out of Mountain View High and go right down Truman, and they accelerate quite a bit.
Yes.
So, that was just my own personal experience. I have mixed feelings, because I don't think that the number of cars traveling is spread out, so it's, it's hard to say what the impacts are. And as Zach pointed out, the bell rings at eight-thirty at Oak and seven forty-five, I think, at Mountain View High. My kids were going to both schools. So, I don't know how much extra traffic there will be after that time, because it's, again, I don't know how many cars are coming up and down Truman after like nine o'clock. It's work traffic predominantly.
Okay.
So...
Before we move on, you know, we do have the traffic engineer who did the study here.
So, I don't mind listening to why Truman wasn't considered.
Good evening. My name is Ling Jun. I'm from Hexcon Transportation Consultants. We conducted the traffic study for the Children's Corner project. We choose the intersection along Grant, because these are the busiest nearby intersections on a daily basis that the product will add traffic to. The intersection along Grant, like those two intersection at Bryant and Oak, are operating at levels, Level Service B or C. Like the intersections along Truman, which is a minor street compared to Grant, should be operating at acceptable level of service during the peak hour. The Children's Corner project is estimated generate forty-seven trips during either a.m. or p.m. peak hour, which is less than one vehicle per minute. So, there will not be noticeable changes to the existing condition. That's why we only choose those two intersections.
But did you say that Fremont Street was equivalent to Grant?
Oh, that the trip distribution that we based on, taken from the zip code data from the Mountain View Parent Nursery, Nursery School, the zip code data show very little likely traffic we use of Fremont Avenue. That's why we, the trip distribution most focus on Grant.
So, it looks like figure one, she's got a distribution showing seventy percent. See if I'm reading correctly. It looks like it's page eight, which is figure one. Seventy percent at Bryant and Grant, twenty percent, if I'm reading it correctly.
That's correct.
Twenty percent at Oak and Grant, and only five percent from Fremont, and five percent of the neighborhood on the other side of...
So, that's where the people are living, and they're coming that way?
I don't, you can ask her, but I'm just saying...
That's the question, and then we're...
Yeah, that's based on the zip code information for the parents.
Okay. So, what you're saying is that, that's, that's the coming, that the people are coming there, but once they drop off, then, that, that's the, that's the concern, because I know that a lot of people come down Truman to get to eighty-five, to get to the freeway.
So, so your, your assumption...
Not you. I was, the audience was chiming in.
So, the assumption about arrivals is not in dispute. What we're talking about is departures. And where would we see that information about the departure trips?
Or was the assumption that they returned home? Is that was your assumption in your estimations, your counts?
I'm sorry, the, the public hearing is closed, so it has...
I'm the applicant as well.
Doesn't matter.
I think the public hearing is closed. We've asked a question. So, where in the study were we looking at the departure trips?
Yeah, we're based on the zip code of the student home.
So, you assume that they were going home?
So, we assume that where they come from, they will get back to...
Okay, so what we're saying is that a lot of people are dropping off their kids because they are going to work, which may or may not be in the same direction as their zip code. Okay. Other questions for, and some, well, thank you.
No, I was wondering whether Zach was the letter and the anal, which contained rather some analysis and questioning of the traffic study provided to the applicant and to their traffic consultant, and is the traffic consultant prepared to respond to any of that?
In a timely manner.
We received that letter this afternoon.
Oh, so the answer is no.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Ronita, I cut you off. Go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm supportive of this application. I think that the site is perfectly situated for such use. And, I mean, more broadly, if you were to ask me, where is it appropriate to put a preschool in the city of Los Altos, I would say anywhere where you want people in the city of Los Altos. And, you know, preschools are not provided by the, by the state. So, everyone with a two, three, four, or young five-year-old needs this service, and we have to be putting it everywhere in our town if we want to ensure that families stay in our town. So, we have approved it in the past in homes, like daycare facilities. And as long as the impact is nominal, and the size is small, and the traffic is thoughtful in how they get the kids in and out, we've supported it. And so, in this case, where you have a church that's going to be housing the students, and you've got Cow Water on one side, a street, two streets on the other, you know, a high school just across the street, another elementary school next to it, the, there are actually very few residents abiding it, though I believe that we need to have schools and preschools abiding them. And we're talking about forty-eight students, and they have a staggered arrival, so it's really nominal. I mean, if, if...
It's sixty.
I thought here it says a maximum of forty-eight, and then fourteen teachers. Sixty, sixty. Okay. Regardless. What's this? Oh, that's the neighboring. Okay, so, I, I mean, I still, I still think that, you know, our, our town had a preschool here, and now they're being made homeless. And if you were to poll everyone in our town, I, I think the vast majority would say, yeah, we like preschools. And then if you ask them the next question, do you want one right next to your home, or would you prefer it not next to your home? I think, again, everyone is gonna say, well, I'd prefer it not right next to my home. But we, we need them. And so, I, I think that, you know, when you review this and you talk about impact, there's no use that is impact-free. The question is, does the impact degrade the quality of life for everyone around? And I don't believe that that's the case here. And I, I believe them when they say they want to be a positive force in the neighborhood. I think they will be a positive force in the neighborhood. They have been, for thirty-eight years, a positive force in our community. So, I think we can trust that they will continue to serve in that role. And in, in terms of, like, all the other things that we think about when we talk about putting this kind of use, we talk about noise, and we talk about traffic, and we have a whole host of other concerns. It seems like traffic is the biggest concern here. And I think that there's a lot of other ways that you can mitigate that concern, through traffic calming measures that perhaps our city engineer, if we still have a traffic engineer, can assist with, because the greatest impact, I believe, is probably coming from the public schools in the area. And frankly, if our public schools double in size in ten years, well, there's nothing that any of us can do about that, that will just have to be absorbed. So, I believe that we can, so, I'm, I believe that there are better ways to solve the traffic issues than just making it impossible for a preschool to operate in this location. And then in terms of safety, which I think I heard someone say, I think, you know, I think as a church, I would imagine is a pretty safe space for children to, to have a preschool. And I think that parents, I know when I had a preschooler, you're walking your child into the school, you're, they're not, you know, dropping them off. It's not like the high school kids that are biking or, or maybe driving themselves, or getting just dropped off a block or two away by their parents. Preschoolers are, you know, taken from their place to place. So, I think that, again, the traffic calming concerns, traffic calming measures are probably a better way to solve some of the concerns. But I'm unequivocally, wholeheartedly supportive of this application.
And Mike, we should go back to you, because you had your questions, but I don't think you ever talked about whether you could support the program, or whether you want to wait to hear the other commissioners.
I'm gonna say I'd like to wait, because I'm, I'm on the, it's, it's tough, because I think, as was pointed out, the facility itself is a great location for preschool. It, it houses the stuff, but I also have a concern that we're adding cars to a, a place that there are a lot of traffic. And we don't have any data that I can see that gives us...
Though I thought she said that they were at acceptable levels during peak hours, B and C. We have areas that are far more...
But the issue is Truman and Fremont, that intersection, there, there's a line of cars in the morning. I know that. And there's a line of cars on Fremont. You can't get out, onto Fremont, because they're all backed up from the light that's in, that's next to the eighty-five. So, it's...
Just incoordinated, yes.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a traffic engineer to talk to the county, and so there we are.
And it's, yeah, and it's also another city.
Yes. Alex?
Thank you. It seems to me that if Truman's getting backed up and you can't take that left to make eighty-five, that you're just gonna go back to Grant, where there's a light.
And you can.
And turn left, and then turn left again on Fremont.
Actually, what a lot of people do is go right and make a U-turn, come back the other way.
So, again, I think I agree with Ronita that there's solutions that can be engineered to deal with any traffic impacts here. And, and things kind of also just naturally sort themselves out. And so, from that perspective, I, you know, along with everything else that Ronita said and I don't want to repeat, I'm also in support.
Okay. Sally?
Yes, so, I'm...
Why don't we put our screens down?
Oh. Those are just the numbers I'm gonna talk about, though, but I have them on paper. That's all right, I have them on paper, too. So, you know, it sounds like this is just not a great traffic problem. But it's not, but you're putting, you're, so if you look at the numbers that are being projected there, and you really look at the time where there's potentially an impact, and if you compare, to me, it looks like it's the eight to eight forty-five time slot, because the elementary starts at eight-thirty, so those kids are getting dropped off about eight-twenty, eight-twenty-five. Some of them, their parents are running late, so it's eight-thirty or whatever. But the high school starts at eight-ten, so that's before the slot. And it gets out, depending on which day, it gets out at two-ten or, or three-something, but they, they all, actually, the high school kids have staggered exit times as well. So, there's really no overlap with the high school. It's all the elementary school. But we're talking sixteen families that are slotted in this, this time slot. So, if you take sixteen out of the, what, four-hundred or so of Oak, which, there's probably less than that, because some are siblings, and maybe some of these sixteen families are, well, no, if it's families, let's assume one car. That's, that's just not gonna, that is not gonna change the traffic situation one way or the other. It, it just doesn't, the rest of those slots don't interfere with anything. So, we're, it's not a discussion right now. It's, it's the commission talking amongst ourselves, so. So, if you look at what it says, that one, that first time slot, eight to eight forty-five, which will have some overlap with Oak, is sixteen families estimated to be dropping off. I, I just don't see that that's going to make a critical difference in hundreds of cars for the elementary school. And I also found, I'm gonna bring this up, because no one's mentioned it, and there's been some talk in some of the letters about the alcohol programs for them during the daytime. There's only one time that the kids are actually there, and these are people who are going to actually address an issue. They're not on alcohol when they go to these programs. Well, presumably, you won't show up at your twelve-step if you're, you're back at negative one, I don't know. But, you know, so, that's a non-issue. Let's, let's focus on, I mean, the traffic is not a non-issue, but I don't see that the overlap in the slot is gonna make a hill of beans a difference, because you're, you've, you live where you live, and there's traffic. So, I actually support this application, too, and for all the other reasons that they've said I won't repeat. But I empathize with you, but this is not gonna change anything.
Thank you, Sally. Anita?
I have similar concerns to what Mike has expressed about the reality of where the traffic actually goes. And I'm concerned about what I see as a, an omission in the traffic analysis that I think we need to have plugged. I think we need both to have that looked at and to look at whether there are mitigations before this goes forward to council. I think if we don't do that, that we're doing a disservice to council, to send it forward the way it is. I don't know, Zach, maybe you do, whether we have any sort of active project on safe routes to school involving Oak at the moment, or whether there's any other efforts being done, or initiatives, or whatever, to help manage the chaos that accompanies an elementary school.
Unfortunately, I don't have any information on if there are any active projects or projects in the works in that regard.
I don't know of any.
Because if, if, if we have the potential for making that better, I think that's an emphasis that, that's a priority council has made for the year. And this is an opportunity, perhaps, because there are sixty families involved. And even though it may be sixteen at this time, and then twenty in the next half hour, there's still, that's a lot of coming and going. And I live on Panchita, where the high school, we call it Panchita Raceway, because the high school kids, you know, and, and the parents, actually, the parents drive faster than the kids do. The kid, the parents who are late bringing their kids to, their freshmen to school, drive faster. So, I, I think we... So I, I think we ought to be asking for a response from the engineer to the material that the community provided. I think we ought to ask them to, ask the engineer to go back and look at the intersections and the traffic problems that Mike has intimate knowledge of and spoke about. I think we ought to look at whether there are any projects or initiatives that can help mitigate the problems that were cited by one of the community speakers before we take an action on this.
Okay. Mike, it's back to you, because I get to go last.
Well, the thing that I was just thinking about is that has, has been raised, that area is the public schools that are really having the issues with cars coming and going. And that's before the hours that the, what, 16 families are going to probably come down. But I would like to see what that impact would be throughout the day. So I'm...
Getting there.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I don't know what, if, what the options are, I guess that's my question, is if we wanted to have a further traffic study of, of that street before it goes to council, can that happen? Or does it have to sit back here?
The action tonight is a recommendation.
Okay.
So I believe, and Zach can correct me, that we could recommend city council, we could recommend approval, provided that when they make their presentation to council, that the traffic study be expanded, for example.
Right.
To cover the Truman, the three Truman intersections. But with that said, I'm kind of doing a nose count here, but if that were a condition, would you support this project?
Yes, I would.
Okay. So...
Madam Chair, if I may just add one...
Yes, sir.
...one of clarification. Keep in mind that if a, if further work on the traffic study were to be requested, it would need to wait until school started in the fall, because it would, council at this time of year would not, would not really identify what the true traffic issues are.
I would not support that.
But it would show the work traffic, that's what I'm, my concern...
It isn't the responsibility of the applicant to solve all the traffic problems of this neighborhood. Before this application, the neighbors could have, they have a mechanism for bringing, they have a mechanism for trying to analyze their road conditions and see if there are traffic calming measures. And they weren't, they weren't utilized. We've talked about these things, that they, you could, and you have to, it, it, the process is just as simple as going around asking people if they want to sign a petition to not allow preschool. So no action has been taken to try to solve this before these guys came. So I don't think it, it is on them to try to solve all of the traffic problems in this neighborhood in order to get their application forward.
You have made that very clear. And so now I get to have the last word, because I'm the chair. So I will start by saying I'm in support of this location, I'm in support of the project going through. Knowing what we do now, I would not be able to support a condition that requested additional information before it goes to council, because it's summer, and we're not going to get it. I agree with Sally, I think the addition is de minimis in the mess that is, having that many institutional uses going on on a similar site. But with that said, I know I should declare that my kids went to Children's Corner, and I walked them from my house, I was very fortunate. What I'm hoping will happen is that Children's Corner will go here, and another nursery school will go into the new Hillview Community Center. So we will have two in the town, because as far as I'm concerned, there cannot be enough preschool available if we want to have kids in our town and support them. With that said, I believe that Children's Corner, when I went, which was in the dark ages when dinosaurs roamed the earth, it wasn't like 16 people came at once. Because as one of the speakers pointed out, preschoolers are not the most malleable of service people, and, you know, they won't even get out of the car for 15 minutes sometimes. So I have a feeling that the, the image of a phalanx of cars coming in at exactly the same time is a real concern, but I don't think it's a valid one. And I think that Children's Corner has a way, for example, if they were to say to their parents, who would normally come in that block, although we don't like doing this, we're going to move ours up to 7:45, you may drop early in order to avoid this. Or, those of you who can come after this time, we will give you a discount. Because I think that one of the things that Children's Corner has done in the past is been very flexible for the parents, and I think they could be flexible for the neighborhood as well. If it turned out that there was a problem, though I have to say, harking back to Commissioner Meadows, I believe it's de minimis. And I think accurately pointing out to other commissioners, the mess is not this. And I don't see this as a straw that will break the camel's back, I think the back has been broken. And I think the school district needs to step up and do something. And from our perspective, the only thing we can do up here is look at this and say, is this an appropriate use in the town? Yes. Is this an appropriate use in this facility? Yes. Can we support it? And we can decide that. But if we have a traffic engineer on staff, Zach...
We do.
We do. Then that's something that the neighborhood can talk to the traffic engineer about organizing with the school district. And it's very complicated, because there are a lot of municipal government things that are hard to do. But we've got Mountain View, we've got Los Altos, we've got the school district, and we've got the engineers. It seems to me that this could be something that could be brought up as an item not on the agenda, as Mr. Seaman did here, at city council, and say, look, we're in the Oak School neighborhood, we have a problem, we need your help. And since it's on the high priority list for city council, this is a perfectly appropriate, better venue than here, and making the Children's Corner the butt of the problem that really isn't theirs. So I believe that we have enough to get a motion of recommendation, one way or the other. So... Someone to move?
All right.
Unless there's further discussion, I don't want to cut people off.
Further discussion? No?
Okay.
Okay, I move that we accept Use Permit 18, UP 05, for new preschool, that's a conditional use permit, at Oak Avenue, with the findings and conditions as described in the staff report.
Do I get a second?
Would that one change to the second whereas, right?
Yes, with the modification to the attachment, to refer to 15301 instead of...
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, 6-0. Okay, thank you for coming out. The next item on our agenda is item four, which is the Affordable Housing Code Amendment. And as soon as we get a little settling in the audience, we'll have Zach give us a staff report.
I was just making sure the applicant got the, all of the copies of the comment letters.
Okay.
All right.
I'm going to ask you guys to take it outside, because we still have the rest of our meeting. And so, our Planning Commission Agenda Report from Zach Dahl. Boy, this was a heavy-duty meeting for you, Zach. You were a one-man show.
Is John on vacation?
I am representing all planning interests tonight. Zach Dahl, Planning Manager.
No one cares about affordable housing.
That's not true, Jeremy's here.
That's a change of base. Hey, Jeremy.
So, this item, it's an amendment to the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance. The short, concise version is, we are making a recommendation to increase the city's inclusionary or affordable housing requirement for housing projects from 10%, which is currently on the books, to 15%. Also included in this, we are expanding the applicability. Currently, this applies only to projects that are multifamily, and it's only compulsory from projects that are 10 units or more. So as proposed in the amendment here before you...
Five units or more?
Well, five to nine can, but they have an easier mechanism to opt out.
Ah, okay, got it.
Based on financial hardship, whereas the code says 10 units or half provide. So what we're proposing tonight is that projects that are more than five units, I believe it's more than five, or five or more, do need to provide affordable housing for those projects between six and nine. We prescribe the number of units, since it's very fractional at that point. And then for projects of 10 or more, it's that 15%. And it does look at, as you'll notice in the existing ordinance, our ordinance says 15% low or 10% very low, so we're upping both of those percentages to now 20% low or 15% very low. And we did discuss that, I'll touch on the 15% threshold in a minute, but as long as there is a 15% option in the rental category, in consulting with the city attorney, it appeared, we're comfortable with that unless we hear otherwise from HCD, but since there has been discussion of it going beyond 15%, then becomes actually a, a deterrent for the provision of housing, and that's obviously a fine line to walk. But then we are also looking at for, for sale units, 15% with a majority as moderate income. And the reason we're doing that is to allow one, because we have to achieve our affordable housing numbers in a number of categories. And by requiring this mix of units, we ensure that every project is providing BMR units in multiple categories. And, and then also, what we've found is that projects that are seeking a density bonus or development incentives will need to group their units in one category. So in order to comply with the city's ordinance, as well as then providing a, a number of low or very low units that gives them the density bonus or development incentives they're looking for, the city may actually be able to achieve additional units beyond the 15%. But the primary objective is to ensure that every project is providing BMR units in multiple categories. And overall, as has been studied in the past, when looking at BMR units for sale units, the moderate income level is the most ideal target, because that's the income range that is most suitable for purchase, versus low and very low is, is much more suitable for rent, based on living, cost of living in the Bay Area, and the cost of rent versus the additional need, economic resources you need to purchase a home. So that's kind of the gist of it. And then also, we are doing some other cleanups to better integrate these, these earlier sections with the density bonus section that was recently reviewed and adopted by Planning Com, or reviewed by the Planning Commission and ultimately adopted by the city council. And then also, this is a somewhat prescient matter, in that you may or may not be aware, there was a recent grand jury report that was, that was issued, affordable housing crisis, density is our destiny, and they made a number of findings for all jurisdictions within Santa Clara County. I would definitely encourage you to take a look at it, this, this just came out end of June. But one of their recommendations is that all cities should increase their affordable inclusionary requirement to 15%. Also adopting an affordable housing impact fee, which we've, we've just done, and then also reducing or eliminating lot size limits for ADUs, which we've done. So I think actually, Los Altos is, is ahead of the curve in, in that respect with regard to addressing these issues raised in this report. So I think this is another piece of information that is also very much supportive of increasing our inclusionary requirement. Also, there were two pieces of correspondence that spoke in support of this amendment that are on your dais and were forwarded to you. But overall, base as recommended, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommends support or approval of this to the city council.
Questions for staff? I had one.
Go ahead.
Mine is just a quick one. There was, there was a series of court cases, both in Southern California and San Jose, about rental units. Have they resolved in a way that we are in compliance with what the state law is wanting us to do?
Yes, and I'm not well-versed in the specifics, but I know there was state legislation kind of commonly referred to as the Palmer fix, because it was the Palmer case that invalidated inclusionary requirements. But oftentimes, it was more when jurisdictions were forcing rental BMRs in rental projects versus offering up. And the majority of projects in Los Altos are for sale, and, and usually, a project is offering them because they are seeking an incentive or, or density bonus. But yes, this, we, this ordinance has been reviewed by the city attorney, and, and we've looked at what the current state legislation is, and we're, we're comfortable that it is in compliance with that.
Thank you. And Ronit, you had a question, too?
Yeah. I'm just wondering, in the last, since we did our, adopted our housing element, of projects that were in the five to nine range, has, have people opted out? I mean, have we had people, you said that there, there's a mechanism currently in our system for developers to opt out in the five to nine range of buildings. I had always assumed that five or more, you have to do it.
When I'm thinking back, because this, our, the ordinance that's currently up to be amended, it was originally adopted by the city, and I believe it was '08 or '09, or in that, that range. Since that time, there have not been any projects approved by the city that fell into that range. They were either kind of a, a three or a four-unit project, kind of most likely in the Tyndale, Questa, Lassen area, or they were above 10, and so they automatically had to meet the requirement. There may have, the only project I can think of, which ultimately was denied, was the 999 Fremont project, which had five units.
And then he reduced it to four.
So, and now, when, you'll see that in the future, it has three. So...
Oh.
I, I, not 100%, but my recollection of the pro, multifamily or mixed-use projects that have come through, we haven't seen many in that ra, size range. They're user, usually either lower or larger.
Okay. And then when I look at the five categories, I, I, it looks like we're tackling the low and the very low income, but I was wondering, you know, why did we, or did you consider setting the requirement at 20% low, 15% very low, and then 10% extremely low? Because otherwise, I don't see how that ever gets accomplished. Or would people do that to get density bonus? Like, when would those ever get built, if we are requiring something different?
That is a good question. I don't, I don't know the specific answer to that. I know that our ordinance has always focused on those three categories, I think primarily because with that, that extremely low, or the category eats, I'm, I'm not sure of the specifics, I just know that our ordinance has never addressed it. And we've looked to achieve that in other ways. At that point, you're looking more kind of at, at shelter-type housing or single-room occupancies, because the nature of, of BMRs at that level is, is different than a, your typical rental, or, because you're looking at, at a very low-income category. But I, I don't know the specific answer to that. And I know we've looked at other ways to achieve that, but obviously, that is not, in the past, that number has been a challenge for the city to reach.
Okay, another question. Is, I, I don't know if you, if this is a question really for the city attorney, but does state law supersede this? So if state law requires 10%, and anything above that gets a density bonus, or it gets a, you know, state law only requires 10%, but if they do, if a developer does 15%, then they get from this menu of, of additional exceptions? Then are we ensuring with, by doing this, we're basically codifying that every project is going to take advantage of this sort of menu of...
I don't see that. How, why, how, if we're, hmm. What you're saying is, they always, at this moment, the developers who want to get a incentive...
They do the 15%.
They do the 15%.
If we're requiring it, by state, state law still supersedes it, they're going to get it.
Yes.
So...
That's where I, I'm, if they're stuck anyway, I'm not understanding where we're going off the rails, if we are.
No, I don't think we're going off the rails. I think we're basically ensuring that all of these, every project will...
Well, every project is going to, according to this, get BMRs of what, of various levels.
No, because you've given them a way out. They can buy their way out with impact fees, or an INLU, whatever we want to call it.
But that was, that's policy, city council came up with that policy.
And state law allows it also.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so every project will not necessarily have BMRs. But if they don't, then they have to pay fees to do them elsewhere.
So affordable housing can be developed elsewhere, using that money?
Yeah, the state law requires that, we can't mandate that the housing be built onsite. If the developer wants to offer, we have to consider, or, I mean, or almost, I, I don't know if we have to allow, but we definitely have to allow a provision to consider an alternative such as an off-site location, or the payment of an impact or an INLU fee in place of building those units. However, I think our goal is to continue to encourage the construction of BMR units as part of every project, so they're mixed in. But yeah, we do have to provide that option for another, an alternative means to comply.
Okay. Alex?
What, but I think what Ronit is saying, and maybe I'm wrong, but, is that essentially by definition, every project will comply with or have access to density bonus.
But that's true now.
Well, they could just do 10% now, and not take advantage of any...
Right.
I have to say, this goes back to something I said a long time ago. If you say that you can, this is the maximum profile you can have in a house. We see that profile. If we say to you, if you do more, you can have more units. We haven't seen anybody voluntarily do less. I mean, the economics are driving it at this moment.
Right. I think with or without this, people will take advantage of the density bonus.
So my questions were, because we're talking about 15 percent, but it's really 20 percent.
Well, if.
When you do the math, yes.
Yeah.
When.
Or even.
Well, if you're providing low-income rental units, the 20 percent would kick in. But otherwise, if you were providing the bare minimum, you have the opportunity to provide 15 percent very low for rent, or 15 percent with a mix of moderate and then some other income category, low or very low or extremely low.
But that's not what you're saying, right? Or, I don't want to let him.
I just want to make sure these are questions for Zach because we do have someone, remember the public would like to speak before we discuss.
Yes.
And I want to make sure that you're, there's a question for Zach.
Yeah, so my question is, because we're talking about it in terms of 15 percent, but it's really, I mean, there's 20 percent. Right?
Well, there is a 20 percent provision in that rental category.
Yeah.
But for both rental and for sale units, there's an opportunity to just provide 15 percent for a developer.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll point out that in both cases, whichever one a developer might choose, the density bonus is the same, which is 35 percent.
Up to 35 percent.
Yeah, up to 35 percent.
My other question is, was there any kind of economic analysis or other analysis done to come up with these numbers? Like I, yeah, like why 20 percent? Why not 18 or 17, or why 15 percent? I'm curious what, what it's all based on.
The economic analysis, we did not do an economic analysis. We were looking at a couple of factors in choosing 15 percent. The most, the most pressing one was the, 15 percent is the number identified by this HCD as allow, they're willing to allow jurisdictions to go up that high before they view an inclusionary requirement as being, is basically prohibiting the construction of units. And so that's kind of the balance that they struck. And then also, this is backed up now by this, this grand jury report that recently came out. But overall, that, that seems to be the trend. A number of cities around, around Santa Clara County have already gone here, and I think with this report, most, if not all, will probably move in this direction. So there isn't, I would say it's basically kind of based on where state law is pushing housing ordinances to go.
Okay. And then my last question, Zach, is how do you see it working for residential, it seems like for like subdivisions? It attaches to subdivisions as well?
That is correct. We are, as part of this, we're opening this up to any, create, any project that creates housing in excess of five units. So it would now apply to a larger, single-family subdivision as well.
And so if you're a developer and you're just selling lots, like I'm just cur, like I couldn't grasp the concept of how it would actually work for.
For a single family, the developer would be required to construct the house on the lot that is designated as below market rate and then sell it at the designated income category.
And then does it live in posterity? Is it the low, I mean, then the buyers have to.
Is it perpetuity, it stays under market?
Have to sell a house as the low.
Based on current, well, this, up until recently, the city's affordable housing contract was a deed restriction for 30 years that then re-upped every time it's sold. So if someone lived there for longer, it would go up. We are now increasing that to 55 years, based on guidance from the city attorney and what's allowed by state law. Fifty-five years is referenced in multiple different areas as being a minimum, so we're seeing that as a, as a defensible number. But also, the goal is, is we do want to keep these units in that affordable category as long as possible. So for both rental units or for-for-sale units, it's a 55-year deed restriction. And for-for-sale units, when it sells, that deed restriction goes up because we don't want to incentivize, and as the value is someone going up as you get closer to that 55-year mark, because then you're realizing a huge value in going from that deed restricted value to market value.
Yeah.
Okay. So it will, like basically force a developer to actually construct.
Units.
A single-family home.
Yes, that is right.
Right.
If there was a subdivision.
Yes.
If there's a subdivision, will there be parameter, like, is that the first house that gets built? Is that the last house that gets built? How does that get enforced? Like.
I mean, the thing is, is the overarching requirement is there, and then through conditions of approval, we would work through the specific details of how that would get accomplished. I think it would depend on the project. I mean, if we're looking at a subdivision of six, seven, eight lots, there might be a different criteria for how it's, when it's constructed versus if you were looking at a 40 or 50-unit subdivision. The reality is, in Los Altos, we've got, there's only a handful of prop, of single-family properties that could be subdivided to where they would even be subject to it. However, we wanted to make sure that we're capturing as many residential projects when they're adding units as possible. And so that was really the objective here.
Okay.
I mean, probably the primary project that's, if it moves forward, would be 20, 2100 Woods Lane.
Yes.
As it does have, that's, there's a density in there of 15 to maybe 20 or 30 homes, depending on how it's proposed. Other than that, there's maybe a handful that might be five to seven. But even that, most, because Los Altos is functionally built out in this, where for single-family.
Yeah, I also have a question. So I wasn't sure when you look at, for projects with 10 or more units, rental units would provide 20 percent at the low income or 15 at the, for, at the very low income, but ownership units are providing 15 percent at the moderate income level. And we talked about, because you really need at least some income in order to be able to buy in. So I understand that, but I just wondered if, you know, the developer is looking at that, is that actually doing the opposite of what we want? If we want that incent ownership properties rather than rental properties? Because the ownership properties have a lower requirement, and really, if we want affordable housing in, then maybe we really want more rental property. So was there any thought and, and study or analysis that went into the trade-offs behind those rental versus ownership differences?
There was. The market forces driving for-sale versus rental, I think, are much larger than just the BMR requirement component. And talking to a variety of developers that have projects or have built projects, there's other things that are going to drive whether they choose to build rental or condo units. And the affordable requirement isn't likely going to affect that decision. What I think we're going to see, and with the way that the for-sale requirement is worded, we're looking for 15 percent with a majority as moderate. When you're looking for a density bonus, your best, you're going to achieve the best density bonus and potentially the most development incentives if you build low or very low. And so by requiring the mix, we, we could very likely see projects end up offering more than 15 percent because they'll provide the minimum at the moderate, and then they'll provide, provide additional at low or very low. So there's also some thought as to why achieving the mix, we get more, and then ultimately, the developer may be incentivized to offer us more to get a higher density bonus or more development incentives.
Okay, thank you.
Any more question?
Um, Zach, with respect to the mix, I have a question. In the state law, and it's an, it's a clause in the state law that we did not incorporate in our ordinance, but it's by reference, because I know everything that's still in the state law, it's included by reference. It says that the developer has to choose which income category of units they are going to base their claim for density bonus and incentives on. And it says in the state law that they cannot mix or add different categories. They have to pick one. So my question is, peggybacking off of what Sally was just talking about with this mix of different, you know, requiring basically a mix, we're basically forcing a developer to do something in order to get a better, or they would, they would get a better density bonus, like you said, if they go to the very low.
Incentivizing, we're not forcing, we're incentivizing.
We're incentivizing, but we're also constraining because we're saying you have to do this much moderate, and then you have to do the rest in a mix. So my question is, has Christias really looked at that? Can we really and truly require a mix when we can't, under state law, or we aren't required under state law, to grant density bonus for more than one category?
In reviewing this with the city attorney, they did not raise any red flags. And because our ordinance already does this, right now, we, our ordinance says you need to provide 10 percent moderate, but when you've got more than one, one of those has to be low. And then what we've seen, and 4880 is a good example, they ended up, their minimum requirement for the city ordinance was one moderate, one low. They added another low, or actually, they might have been two very lows, to then get the density bonus they were looking for. And so, yes, you are correct. They, if they're going to, you, they're going to have to either pick the moderate grouping and group those and try to get the best density bonus or development incentives they can, or they would have to group the very lows or lows, depending on which category. So yes, that's what I was alluding to, is where, say you, a project needs to provide seven BMR units. They'll provide four moderate and three low or very low. They may want to add another low, or maybe two more, to get the desired density bonus or to get a second development incentive. They would still only be using that grouping of low or very low to achieve those. The moderate wouldn't be factoring in, but the net result is a higher overall percentage of affordability.
Yeah, my only question is basically, has, has Christias, or is the, whoever in his firm is the expert on this? We, the other lady or whoever may be else there?
We've.
Looked specifically at the question of whether we can really and truly, because we're, you know, going from saying one has to be moderate is a whole lot different than specifying for percentages like it is here. To me, this is a substantive change, and I just want to be sure that they've actually looked at it and that we're okay.
We've reviewed it with our office a number of times. We can definitely go back with that specific question and make sure. But based on our existing ordinance and the proposed ordinance, in walking through and discussing the percentages, and this breakdown where we are looking at how to achieve units in multiple categories, there were, they reviewed it, and there was no concern raised with that provision as drafted. But we can definitely go back before this goes to city councils and ensure that they're comfortable with that in light of that concern.
Okay. Then I only have two other, what I hope are very quick questions. One is, in, excuse me, of the projects that have been approved or built under the current housing element, so that's the last roughly three years, so there's not a lot. If we applied these criteria, how many more units would we have? I mean, there's no data here that says we've actually, under this housing element, we've actually built this many units in these categories, and this many that meet these particular, or within these particular income levels. And if we were to apply, or if we were to have applied these criteria, we would have ended up with this many instead. And, and I would think that council, I would be interested in that data. I would think council would be interested in that data.
The, well, the short answer is, we really only have one project to compare that to because we've approved so, so few housing projects over the past.
So there's only, what, 4880?
4880 is, I mean, we've had some small projects, but projects that exceeded 10 use, 10 units. Since the projects downtown that occurred back in kind of 2010 through 2012, 2013, 4880 is the only multiple-family affordable housing, or multi-family project of that size that the city has approved.
Okay.
So that it's a very small sample size.
Okay. And then my other question, which I sent via email earlier today, is that, and we discussed this when we went through the ordinance before, that the way the state has us report things, and it is mentioned on page two of the staff report, the city has exceeded its requirement for production of above moderate income units, over 200 new units, that substantially all of those units are not actually new additional.
They're not then units.
They're not additional housing stock. Those are the reconstruction of knocked-down units. So my question is, again, data, how many of those, if any, are actually additions to housing stock? And how much of the below-market-rate units that we've done are additions to housing stock?
I can get the exact number. I can tell you it's, in terms of net new housing, I mean, then again, I think 4880 is, I mean, during, for, if we're just looking at the housing cycle for our current housing element, which started in 2014, 2015.
2015, yeah.
2015. Really, we have 4880, and I think we have a couple of, we have two units on Acacia. We have, that hasn't been built yet, it's approved.
Approved.
Three units. There might be two, three unit townhouse projects, kind of in the Tyndall Cuesta neighborhood. Beyond that, there may have been a handful, maybe one or two vacant lots that had houses built on them. But really, other than that, they, that number is almost entirely comprised of houses that were torn down and rebuilt, which we have vetted with the state, and they have accepted because under their methodology, you're now creating a new housing unit for 50 to 75 years, whatever the accepted life cycle is. But yeah, so that, that's why that unit, that's why we're far exceeding our totals in that category.
And just a quick question. So Marie Callender's site got changed. I know there are BMR units in there.
They are, but I mean, when that was approved, that was, I think, 2011, 2010.
Okay, so it's the age. And same thing with 960 San Antonio.
That one, that one was back in 2007, 2008, like 100 First, 396 First, 86 Third, the handful of housing projects downtown. All of those, when they were approved and built, more or less were completed by 2013, 2014.
Yeah, it was all before the current housing element.
Gotcha.
So I have another question. Though I think Anita's question is important, and I don't know that just having the attorney have, have read the whole thing and then make the presumption that they thought through that specific question is, is valid. I would, I would suggest that some of the questions that, that you raised, we actually like get, you know, like this is a question the planning commission had that they'd like to see city council.
Well, but this is discussion. I hear that. I'm trying to get.
Okay, so another question that I would have.
A question for Zach, and then we should really discuss.
Question for Zach, that I don't know if he has all the answers for, and the detail I would like, but I think it's worth gathering, is I'm interested to know what pieces of these changes were like recommended by the county versus our own design? Like, I get that the 15 percent was something that in this, which I haven't read, but I like the motto, density is our destiny. It should be like there, next to that. But I'd be interested to know, like, did the county also say the very low, low numbers? Or did we come up with that kind of stuff? And the other, the, the piece about the not, having this applied not just to multifamily, did like, did we come up with that? Is that something we got from other neighboring jurisdictions? I'm trying to understand what are best practices versus like our creative solutions?
So the ultimate, or, well, the ultimate reason for moving this forward, when we did, because we, we made the decision to move forward before this, this grand jury report was released, was based upon the council's overarching objective to proactively look at and enact ordinances, policies to help encourage and, and construct affordable housing and specifically affordable housing. So that was the overarching objective that drove us to move this forward. This is also based on that economic study that looked at housing impact fees. It also looked at increasing affordable housing requirements. So overall, the 15 percent, I would say, was driven by the larger regional and state dialogue as being the maximum number we could get at before we had to do some real economic analysis and justification to ensure, to prove to the state that we weren't prohibiting housing or discouraging the production of housing. So that's how the 15 percent came around. The other ratios, we built upon a lot of kind of the study and kind of findings from when we adopted our original inclusionary ordinance, which kind of broke down and focused on the production of moderate for-for-sale and low or very low for rent. So what we did was we wanted to build upon that original premise and kind of up the percentages accordingly. So that was kind of, we wanted to just maintain the current kind of focus of our ordinance, but increase it accordingly to those numbers. With regard to the expansion to including more than just multifamily and looking at single-family, I think that was also kind of listening to the council's direction, and here's an opportunity where we can include more projects to be subject to providing affordable housing units. So other than the 15 percent, this was, this was kind of generated to focus on how do we best achieve council's overarching objective for 2018? And then also, what's the best way to do it consistent with and kind of following the same methodology that exists in our current code?
I think that's it for questions for staff. You can take a deep breath. Jeremy, did you have something you would like to share with us? Jeremy, did you have something you would like to share with us?
Hello, I'm Jeremy. So I wanted to say that around the Bay Area, inclusionary zoning ordinances are the most common source of affordable housing, and I think that updating ours to be the maximum allowed by the state is a great step towards building more affordable housing in Los Altos. So I highly recommend doing so.
Thank you. Seeing you know others, people who submitted something to speak, Lynette, I will close the public hearing, and now, we can actually discuss more about this. So one of the things I heard said was that whatever we do in terms of a recommendation, we would like to have particularly Anita's very nuanced question about whether we're doing something accidentally wrong, reviewed with a really eagle eye by our legal advisors, and-
Eagle eye.
Eagle eye, yes. And then, other than that, I would like to poll the commissioners to go through and see if you think this is an ordinance, if it was modified in the way it is and was reviewed by legal advisors, whether this indeed is something that you would recommend supporting to the city council. And you did it first last time, Anita, why don't you start?
Thank you.
There's no question in my mind that, having listened to council on numerous occasions on this issue, that this reflects the council's commitment and intention. And to that end, I think it's important to support this effort, it's consistent with state law. I have serious concerns about the financial feasibility of this, alluding to what some of the questions were that Alex asked, I, I do not necessarily think we're going to get there by doing this. I'm concerned that we will in fact have an adverse effect on the proposals that come forward with this, this level of requirement. That concerns me, and the fact that we don't have any economic analysis concerns me. This is the, one of the most expensive places to, to live in the state. So I think, you know, kind of, Roni talks about best practices, best practices, and also what's, you know, common or generally done and works elsewhere, may not work here. And I, I just, I don't know, I'm not smart enough, I don't have the information to know if this is gonna work or not, or, but it's the way council wants to go. There are some provisions here that I don't think do what they want them to do, and I have some issues with that, but to the overall thing, yeah, we go forward, I think.
Sally?
Okay, yeah, Phyllis, I, I think I have no doubt in my mind that we need to go to 15%. I do have some questions, or some concerns around some of the specifics, so, so far, I'm, I think I'm sounding like Anita, maybe like all of us by the time we get through. One of the specifics I'm going to say is, I'm, it's not a big issue, because we don't have a lot of these plots, as Zach was saying, but in terms of single-family homes, I really wonder about unintended consequences, particularly when you talk about inclusionary zoning with a single-family home, means you can't just make a two-bedroom home and then everything else is four or five bedrooms. You know, so what does that look like in a complex like that? Again, it's, maybe there's only one parcel in town, but God forbid, what if we ended up in, well, we could redo zoning if we had a fire star. But I mean, you know, really, I do wonder what really the inclusionary zoning looks like if you're talking single-family home developments, and how can you have them roughly equivalent and still make that financially feasible for a developer or anyone else? Then I also wonder if, going back to the actual density bonus tables, if we did incorporate what we're talking about here, then to me, tables DB1 and DB2, which are, and there's no page numbers for some reason on the density bonus, but it's, like, right after the definitions end, it's section C, and the following page shows tables DB1 and tables DB2, we're now sort of separating out for sale versus rental and treating them differently, maybe that doesn't change the table, but, and we're also showing percentage, you know, low-income units. So I didn't, I didn't know whether you'd really look to see, depending on what we incorporate here, how that may necessitate some of these tables being changed.
These are dictated by state law, these tables that are here, so they aren't optional for our purposes.
So even, yeah-
They aren't optional for our purposes, those are taken directly out of the statute.
Okay, so some of it-
And the state also specifically separates rental units and basically recommends that ownership units be more directed towards moderate BMRs and that rental, so this really reflects kind of how the state statute runs.
The, the wording over here, but I still wonder that the table is, I guess the table's all-inclusive, and so you, you think about-
The table applies-
Am I doing a rental, am I doing ownership, what's my percentage, which table do I use? I just, I still think, if we're making changes here, we may, need to make sure-
Just if I can provide one point of clarification, whether it's rental or for sale, that doesn't impact, it's really the income category, so whether it's a moderate for sale or rent doesn't change the incentive or density bonus you might achieve with it.
Okay, so the tables don't change.
Same thing as you're saying, okay.
It's moot.
All right, so then that is probably my, the one thing, and this might have been where Alex was going, if you go back to the applicability 14.28020 on page four, again, I support doing this, but, but one affordable housing unit out of five is actually 20%, and, you know, one out of six is 17%. Two out of, in section B, two out of sevens, actually 29%. You know, so these are really high percentages of, of units that are, they're gonna be providing, so we're gonna be requiring and driving them to the high-end, and actually, I think we even saw this in a study session on one of the El Camino projects, when you, when you build to the 15%, again, I support that we do it, but your density ends up in such a way, because you can exercise all of this-
And you do.
And you do. These are really big. Again, I support that we do it, but, you know, these numbers we're requiring are actually pretty high, because we're talking small numbers, small base. Okay, that's it.
Alex?
I'd agree, I think that we have data and there's information that 15% still makes projects feasible, and my concern is that we don't really have data that anything above that really works. And so, I think, reiterating what other people have said before me, is that I'm concerned about the unintended consequences of going above both what the state is saying is defensible and other organizations are saying is defensible. I think for me, the other big one is just really trying to understand the residential, you know, requirement to actually build a single-family home. It, and so, and maybe there's, you can pay in Lufy and, and not actually have to build it, and that's the answer, but there's no way someone, I don't think, can take down below-market rate, or I guess you pay the in-Lufy and then you don't have to actually, yeah. So, I think as long as there's a mechanism to pay the in-Lufy and not have to actually construct a single-family home, I could maybe get more comfortable with, with the residential, but actually requiring to build residential, I think would be troubling.
Okay. Roni, did you guys say something?
If, I was just gonna add in, the current affordable housing impact fee that was adopted by council applies to any project that is, I believe, if more than two units are created, they then have to pay the fee. So, actually, projects that aren't even subject to this are still required to pay the affordable housing impact fee.
So it doesn't apply to single-
It does apply, it applies to any, both non-single-family or non-residential, with the kind of the commercial linkage fee, commercial and office, and it also applies to residential, multifamily, and single-family. With the fee, it then allows for units to be built in lieu of paying the fee, and then with this ordinance, in lieu of building the units, you can pay the fee. So, there, the, the language is added to try to both mutually support the other ordinance.
Great, thanks.
But it's optional, I mean, it, it doesn't really give the bill, the developer, the right to do that. It says the council may. Is that, is that how I read this?
That is correct. Ultimately, both ordinances are written subject to council approval, and so I think the attorney was okay with it for now, but there'll probably be a further discussion, and I think the concern was, we may want to go back and look at both ordinances simultaneously about if that discretion is appropriate or not.
I'll start with the last thing discussed. I think that the inclusion of all residential development projects feels like a fast and furious, like, major change, that I don't see how it can actually play out. I mean, if we actually do have a potential Woods Lane project of 15, 20, 30 homes, then I don't understand how that, like, if you're building a home of 25, 3,000 square feet, and they, and the one that is, the several that have to be affordable have to be of comparable size, and we have at a minimum a thousand dollars a square foot, you know, homes going for sale in Los Altos, you're looking at like, $3 million, how, there's, like, no, I mean, these formulas are based on income level, and it's just, is completely out of affordability, so it doesn't feel like it fits in a town where the land, dirt is so expensive. And also, with multifamily, when they go to 15%, they do, they, they get these bonuses, there's no bonus for a home that they could take advantage of, and maybe they would then be entitled to, and what would that look like? Would we have to allow third story, three, you know, like, I don't know that we've thought this through, or seen it being done elsewhere, so I don't support that one, but I do like a lot of, all the other efforts we're making, though I would like to see just greater specificity in, you know, who's recommending what, who's already implemented, how does this jive with our state law that supersedes this? So, I don't know if I'm saying I can, I'm supportive, but I'm-
Well, so it sounds like two people are saying that, three people actually are saying that the single-family inclusion-
You can add me to the list, I didn't mention-
I think there's a concern, a consensus, that there's a concern on the single-family development inclusion, because it is the only thing that we can actually foresee might happen in town, and the town is fully built out, and you actually have therefore a model that you can apply this concept to and see if it would really do what you want it to do. I think that would be the way to look at it, perhaps before you get to council, but I, only because across the board here, we're getting this, Mike, you gonna join on that train as well?
Well, I, I think this is the right thing to do, and I don't want to just belabor what everybody else has already said, so.
Okay, so that's, I'm, I'm in agreement, we have a strong consensus that 15% as a gestalt is a good idea, and we can recommend that to council. Similarly, we will express our concern that staff and the city attorney, but I think staff really should look at the Woods Lane project as a model of supposing it went in effect as this is written. Is that really economically feasible? Is that the kind of thing that we're going to get a legal pushback on, that says there's no way we can make, we can give away $3 million worth of housing? I mean, that's basically-
What this is paralyzes that.
Yeah, so then the question is, if the goal is to get multi, multiple houses in that site, so we get more housing, then what would be the best method? And that's something that staff can take a look at, because we actually have a real example there.
And I think we should look at where, the extent to which paying the impact fee in lieu of building the BMRs in smaller projects is more of a by right for the developer than at city council discretion, because to me, those smaller projects, trying to get a BMR poked in there and have it be economically feasible, boy, I sure wonder about that.
And there's another piece, when we see them, they are supposed to be the same overall quality and feeling, so you don't feel like you're the, the little, you know, stepchild in the corner, and yet, we've seen somewhere, they actually feel like the stepchild in the corner, they are the ones whose windows are in the courtyard instead of on the outside, they're the ones who have the rear right side instead of the front sunny side, those kinds of things are hard to legislate when economics are driving it.
Yeah.
And so, there, fortunately, we do have a lot of discretionary, I know it's not transparent sometimes, but we do have some discretion in the aesthetics of it that tends to help a little bit on that, but-
So I, I really think that in 1420.030 on the standards, D and E both have to get looked at again. D is the one that says it's basically council discretion, and E, I, I understand from the discussion what the intention is, but the intention is explained in the discussion is not how I read E. So, E was baffling to me.
E was a combination of pulling the wording from our existing ordinance and then also working with the city attorney to make sure that we were providing that waiver, basically that alternative means that state law requires.
But it says we can waive it if it's financially infeasible, and to me, that's not the same as what you're trying to do when you're going to allow for building off-site, building elsewhere, maybe trading with other cities, which isn't mentioned here, but I know is under discussion, so I'm not sure that E, I just don't see how E incorporates the thought process that's under the discussion, so I think that just needs to be looked at again.
Well, and so, before we move off that, can you be a constructive critic on this and think of, I mean, it's one thing to say for them to look at it, do you have something in the back of your mind on this, huh?
Well, specifically, in the discussion, it talks about the waiver provision is necessary to allow projects, specifically rental projects, the ability to seek an alternative means of compliance. If we're going to have an, an alternative means of compliance, I believe that that's covered in D, so it doesn't, you know, it's not part of E, and land dedication or affordable units provided off-site, if we really want to consider off-site, then saying waived, adjusted, or reduced doesn't have anything to do with off-site, so off-site isn't really covered in any of the language here.
Okay.
So whatever we're trying to do with-
So that's the constructive criticism.
With off-site is, is absent in the actual language.
Is off-site referring to councils able to take the, the impact fee money and do it, or is this referring to a developer doing something off-site?
Developer, the, the, what I understand is it would be the developer doing it somewhere else, or potentially, and I think this was, is under discussion, but I don't know if the discussion is far enough along for it to actually be incorporated yet, and that is the idea that some cities, and I think this is covered in, in the document in front of us, and has been discussed and has been done in other counties, where jurisdictions create kind of sub-units and then trade having units built in other jurisdictions, which are supported financially by the-
Funds.
A diff, by the funding jurisdiction, and so it's not always paid for by a developer in another development that they're doing that's at another location, but also might be where the city says, okay, we'll, we'll take your money, but that's, you know, impact fee or in-Lufy, and I think we need to be clear in here where and when there's impact fee, the option for impact fee payments, and when there's some other kind of option, and when is which of those at council's discretion, and which of those are at the developer's discretion. those at council's discretion and which of those are at the developer's discretion.
Cool. Okay, I think that we have a option for a motion here.
So I'd like to make a motion to recommend to city council the, is that how we say it?
Yeah.
18CA04, City of Los Altos chapters, the, the amendment.
It says amendment to code chapter 14.20.
Twenty-eight.
Okay, that's a straightforward, straightforward motion.
I have a question.
Yeah, well, we, I think we need a second before we get a question. Can I get a second? I'll second it.
Okay.
Question, and discussion.
Is, we are just, does that mean we're just approving this to go forward?
That's why.
About this whole, I don't understand this whole discussion.
Right.
Well, we're recommending approval.
Approval.
And then the question is, will there be a friendly amendment offered to say that as part of this motion, the discussion points that were brought up will be mentioned in the report, brought up, investigated by staff, whatever we want the action to be?
I'm, I don't, you did, you did the count, but weren't there a majority of us that did not think it was a good idea to have this applied to all residential?
I think it was single-family is what we were concerned about.
Single-family, right.
So can we get a friendly amendment on that one?
Well, I'd say, and also concerns around being over 15 percent.
Well, I don't think it was ever over 15 percent.
Well, twenty percent.
Twenty percent for low, 15 percent for very low.
Okay. I don't know.
And, and if you look at the percentages for seven to nine units, you're.
That's when we get even higher. Okay. I, I know I have a straw poll for a friendly amendment that could probably be supported, that it shouldn't be applied nilly-willy to single-family residential development.
I would make that amendment.
Okay, and do you accept that?
Yes, I do.
So the amendment would be to exclude single-family projects from this.
I mean, I, I think a case, a better case has to be made for it. I don't think, I don't think the case has been made.
Okay, and now, as for whether 15 percent should be the absolute maximum in all categories, I think, I think I'd like to have, damn, we need to, yes.
So I just want to weigh in with the, as, as state law is, is modeled, it's 15 percent, but you always round fractional units up.
Yes, that's.
So our intent was to most closely align with the individual units. The challenge is, is with those five to nine projects, it may be just a tiny fraction, but rounding all the way up really does increase. So that's the challenge with that, but state law does support that approach in that if you've got a fractional unit, you always round up.
Yeah, and that, that's true.
Even if you're .05, any fraction automatically goes.
Yeah. If you, if you only required one out of seven, that gets you down to the 15, or maybe even a smidgen lower. So I, I totally understand why we have it, but it just is mathematically a high percentage. But I, I, to me, it's understandable. I can support that. I, I'm happy with the addition of the single-family amendment.
Okay, so Alex, if you want to, if you would like to propose another friendly amendment with the point you were just making, we can take a vote on that, or whether Mike will actually accept it.
Yeah, I mean, my, again, my issue is with, we're trying, the, the reality of where we're going to get below market rate units is on projects on El Camino.
The bigger ones.
Of 10 units. And to me, it seems like we don't really have a basis for going to 20 percent at the low-income level. And so, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I'm saying I don't have enough information to really analyze it. And so, because of that, I guess I would, unless we want, because I don't know that we want to defer this until we do have more information, and I don't want to have negative unintended consequences, so I would say that we make the 15 percent the absolute maximum for both categories.
So you're saying that it, they should be 15 percent for.
The five to nine.
The low-income level?
15 percent for the low-income level.
I don't see.
In C1, correct?
So would you change C1, Alex, to say rental units, 15 percent designated as affordable at the low-income or very-low income level?
Yeah, well, then no one's going to do very low.
Yeah, they might, they get more density bonus.
Do they?
Yeah, noticeably.
Yeah.
As you compare, if you look at the.
It's economics, it's not going to be whatever the legislation does.
Yeah, so I'm just, yeah, that's where.
Okay, so you're proposing a friendly amendment that would change C1, you stop me if I get it wrong, at 15 percent instead of 20. Have I got that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
And my thought is, I think 20 percent, we need more housing at that level, that I'd actually not favor.
So I think that amendment, Mike won't accept it, so.
Yeah, you may just get even less housing, right? Because people may not do it.
Okay, I would like to propose a friendly amendment that for projects of five to nine units, the general requirement be the same as for 10 or more, but that the developer has a by-right ability to pay the impact fee in lieu of construction.
As opposed to being counseled or discretion?
As opposed to being counseled discretion.
Okay, is that an amendment that you?
Sure, I can take that.
Okay.
Wait, could you, I just want you to repeat that one more time.
Make sure that Zach has it.
So that in 14.28.020, that A and B.
Yep.
Be replaced to require, to, to read the same as what C does in terms of the percentages, but with the note, note that the developer has the by-right ability to provide those units through the impact fee as opposed to buy inclusionary, buy construction in the project.
But doesn't, isn't it what it is now? Five, five to six, if you take 15 percent, is.
No, because if you, if you have, right now, in especially B, seven, in seven to nine units, two affordable housing units would be 29 percent.
Yeah, but seven times 15 percent is 1.05, therefore, it has to go to two.
And C requires low income, whereas B currently allows moderate income, which is actually a little easier. So as written, it is more favorable to the seven to nine.
And, and five to six?
The change would be more onerous.
But, no, the change would be less onerous. The, the, what's specified here requires more than what C requires, at least the way I do the math.
In absolute math, that's what we were talking about, the absolute math versus if you make it one, it, it, it.
You specify number of units.
It's like 1.05, so you have to round it up anyway, so.
Two, yeah.
Exactly.
Right.
It's the same.
It's the same.
That's the way I read it.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to make it simpler.
But, but if you, but by doing, requiring C, the, the same language, you remove the moderate income level.
As an option.
As an option for A and B, which, to me, if you have five units, maybe you've got to make one moderate income so that you can do the project.
Or both moderate.
Or both, if you had seven to nine.
Having had that discussion.
Well, I guess, and I don't understand A and B, because where it says "and," it seems to me it should say "or," and that's why I'm, I guess I'm confused. For projects with five or six units, you'd be, you would be required to have one affordable unit in an ownership situation as affordable, and a rental unit, and that's why I don't understand the "and" a rental unit, because you can't, it should be "or," I think.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So that, what you're saying is, if you've got ownership units, you have to do it at moderate, if you have a rental unit, you have to do it at lower, very low.
Yes.
Correct.
Right.
So there should be, those should be, read "or" instead of "and."
And I think with that correction, we don't need that friendly amendment.
Right.
Okay.
And the same thing would be.
Except for saying that.
Right.
They would have, the developer would have a by-right ability to do an impact fee rather than constructing the units as a part of the project. I just, those are small properties, it's, it gets really tricky trying to make it work.
They're going to just make four really large instead of six.
Yes, which is what's happening, we're going to see.
Isn't that?
Or big.
But you get the money, you get the money to do it in a more efficient way.
But doesn't 14.28.030 standards D, doesn't that give that?
It says, may be approved by council.
Isn't that where the change should be, that it would say, just, you know, take out the.
Instead of saying. I don't know if it belongs in .020 or if it belongs in .030.
If you do it in 030, then that could directly apply.
Then it applies to the other, I see.
Yeah.
I see, okay.
And as I mentioned earlier, we did have this discussion with the city attorney, and even changing it here, we would, there, we need to change it both here and in the housing impact fee, so.
Right.
We'll definitely look at that, because I, I think what you're raising is something we've been talking to with the city attorneys, and do we have to take away that discretion, or is, is it more or less implied they have that option? So we'll, we'll be looking at that either way, and I think the goal is, we want to make sure this language and our housing impact fee language are the same, because right now, we align this with the housing impact fee language, but we may need to go back and adjust both. But our goal is, we want to make sure that one doesn't contradict the other. But we're going to look at it and determine if we need to amend both, or we're okay with the language as current.
But I guess the question on the floor, in terms of the friendly amendment, is, is there a consensus here? And I don't know, that's.
By right.
What our chair can figure out, whether we're going to give the developer a by-right, buy-out option or not, whether that's the smart thing to do.
Before we look at that, let me just point out to Zach, so in A and B, we have two "ands" that are being changed to "or's," just to make sure that got picked.
Oh, yeah, those are recorded and they will be adjusted.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
And so then the question is.
Well, the question's to Zach, right? If they're going to go look at it, do we?
But what's our policy? Do we have an inclination?
What is our recommendation to the council relative to discretion or by right for the developer in small number development cases?
In things that are between fi, you know, five to nine? I'm just thinking about, how do we get stuff built?
There's not a lot of places to build.
But that, but, but then, then we don't need any of this, so.
But we have, we have had situations where, where people who, right now, the cutoff is at four, and so we know there are projects where people have put, proposed three to avoid.
Yeah.
Having to provide a BMR, and this way.
The cutoff is five, and the only project that I know is 999 Fremont, in the four years that I've been here.
Well, I.
Almost every other project is, factor that in and wants it.
I, I would support it as being by right, certainly in A for five to six units, and then, you know, whether it's seven to nine, I don't know. Again, we don't really have the data in front of us, but I, I do, I mean, it really is onerous to have to go to council to say, you know, you have this impact fee, can I avail myself of it? They really, if you have it, then you should be able to avail yourself of it.
So in fact, it, it goes to the policy of transparency that we try and talk about, where a developer can look at our regulations and know with certainty.
Exactly.
Where they can do things.
Yep.
So on that basis, I can support that by right as opposed to discretion on the two smaller ones.
So we're, we're going to call out that they can?
I don't know, I'm, I'm sort of, we're three, we need at least one other person to agree with that up here, and then we can do an amendment. And that's.
I'm trying to understand what, so you're, what we're saying is that if we're doing small units, A and B, that they can buy out the provision?
Mm-hmm.
And we're just stating it in code?
As opposed to having to get.
As opposed to them, as opposed to them reducing the numbers so that, as you said, they'll do three enormous units.
Or four.
So they won't have to do it, because they can know that if they do more units, they can opt out and money will come to the city, but they won't have to depend on the largesse of city council at that moment.
More predictable.
To play devil's advocate here, though, right? The flip side of that.
Yes, yes. I want no unintended consequences here.
Yeah, is that we end up with everyone just paying into a fund.
Let's say that we do.
And nothing ever gets built.
Well, supposing we get a whole lot of money, then the question is, can something actually be built in working with Mountain View, which has a lot of land that's not fully developed? We are fully built out. I mean, we're not going to get something multifamily in our town, that I can see, unless, as you say, there's a horrible firestorm and we're starting from scratch, which we're never going to think about. So then the question is, if you come to another city with a bag full of money, and you say, I have a bag full of money, let's build something together, are you more likely to have that happen than if people have to depend on the largesse of city council at any given moment, whose tenure will change every few years?
And can you potentially get more bang for your bag of money in another jurisdiction than what you can get here?
I still, to potentially move us forward, I, I still would propose that under 14.20.030 D, you could have D for unit, for nine or, you know, between five and nine units, it's by, by right.
Right.
And then for the 10 or greater, so you just divide D into sort of the two situations.
You're saying, but this is, this is wordsmithing on a certain level, because.
Well, not, not, well, we have to wordsmith it for a friendly amendment if we're going to regard it, I'm just, yeah.
If you want to amend, if you want to just say that for five to nine, they have the by-right ability to buy it out, we can work with the city attorney to best.
Put it in the right place.
If that's your overarching intent, I wouldn't worry about where exactly it goes.
Okay, perfect, all right.
So, once again.
We're, yeah, are, we have a majority of support of it?
We have three. That is to say, Anita and Sally and I can support that. And three would not pass, one should point out. And you would have to agree with it anyway, because it would have to be a friendly amendment.
I just don't understand how it actually play out.
Well, I don't think we can. Let me say this about that. I think we're guessing.
Yeah.
And we're trying to figure out how it's going to work, and in fact, it's the economics that's going to drive it.
Yeah.
And the city's already decided to apply that concept if there's two, three, or four units. Because they already have to pay a fee, if they're two, three, or four.
If the city wants affordable housing, right, why not give council the tools to look at it and say, okay, like, it makes sense to, no, you guys can build it onsite, we want it onsite, or no, we'll take the fee?
That's a good point.
Like, why tie their hands? I don't, that's the part that I don't understand.
Good point, that's why we're looking at it.
That's why we're looking at it.
Yeah.
I'm just going for trying to actually get stuff built and give the developer.
And city councils just want to get it built too, right?
Yes.
And so.
But it's more predictable for the developer, that's.
That was, that was the point that I was on, which is, one of the things we're always dealing with is lack of transparency, and so.
And ease of getting through the city.
Which are not necessarily compatible in some instances.
I'm sorry if I, sorry, I can interject just one other thought.
Oh, please.
For the discussion. One of the things that I think rests very much in the developers' court is whatever they offer the city. So if they come forward and say, we want to pay it, and the city says no, we have a high bar to reject that offer based on the codes and state law. So whether it's housing or the, in lieu of fee, state law rests, I mean, there's certain minimums they have to offer, they can't offer us nothing, but they can, or off-site, we have a high bar to prove. So if we, it is at their discretion, but there's a high bar that we have to make with regard to the findings to support our decision. If we're saying no, developer, we want you to do X even though you're proposing Y, whether it's to pay in lieu or build units and not pay the fee. So however we word it here, my understanding is, based on what the city attorney said and, and other, other state law, is that the developer still holds the cards in terms of what they want to offer the city to meet this requirement.
Right.
So whether we make it by right or say council has discretion, they still have the ability to kind of dictate the terms to a large degree within these parameters.
So what you're saying is, we're talking about stuff that really is not critical.
Right.
Because in fact, it's not in the legislation, it's in the developers' court.
Yes, and I mean, with that said, like I mentioned before, staff is going to work with the city attorney to look at this, and we may take a second crack at looking at this in conjunction with the affordable housing impact fee, to make sure we're, we're as in line with state law as we can be, whether it's by right or whatever max amount of discretion we have building that in. we have building that in. So, whatever action the commission takes tonight, we're still going to be looking at this, but with that said, I think it's, it's going to go strongly in the developers' favor which option they want to choose.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mike, how do you feel about this amendment? It's, this is
We spend more time talking about that than twenty percent.
Okay.
I would, I'd like to leave it out.
Okay, then, we're ready. I think
So, what, where does our amendment stand?
Before we vote, let me just make sure, the only, so we have recommended approval with the only amendment being exclude single-family projects from this ordinance, is that correct?
And the two ands turning to ors.
Oh, yeah, so the two ors, those will get corrected
I know.
Keeping with what the intent of those are.
Although Mike didn't specify it in his motion, the point about fourteen twenty-eight zero-three-zero E needs to be looked at with respect to the off-site.
Mm-hmm.
Are you okay with that one, Mike?
Yeah.
So, in terms of all that clarification, I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay.
All in favor of the amended recommendation for approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Aye.
All right.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay from Commissioner Samick. Okay, so, good work, guys. Now, we're into our commission reports and comments. Now, I happen to know Du Ho is supposed to have been or looked at the June twenty-sixth meeting, and he's not here tonight. Alex has one pending from May twenty-second, July tenth
I was supposed to do.
All right, so I propose the following thing, that we're going to table our commission reports and come back fully armed August twenty-eighth to discuss any commission meetings, and if anybody else needs a copy of
Are we not having a commission meeting?
There's a
We have August second.
We have August second. August second's going to be a good one, too.
And there's one, two weeks.
And, and August sixteenth, both should actually have some very meaty topics.
Yes, I seem to remember that. Okay, so this is just relative
This is the council date.
This is council date, so
So, so when is everybody going to report back on their
August second.
August second.
On August second, and can we have a clue about what's on August second?
Didn't you see the announcement going to the town choir? That's how we get dis
But they keep changing things. I mean, like this one, we were, you know, we were supposed to have one item, and then we ended up with four items. What are we going to have?
We're trying, doing our best to adapt to the, the needs of projects to keep them moving, so, right now, as currently, August second is more or less locked in, I would say August sixteenth still could be flexible depending on things. August second, there, the primary item, well, the only one at this point is the community center. So, and then, August sixteenth, we are looking at a study session for fifty-one fifty El Camino Real Architectural and Site Design Pre-Application Study Session, and then, at this point, the main item would be on that one, forty-eight fifty-six El Camino Real, the fifty-unit multifamily project. Because it's, it's my understanding they are shooting to get their story polls up to meet the twenty-day lead time to get on that agenda.
Did that all get sorted out, what they're going to do for story polls?
Their waiver request was denied by council, so I have still not seen their plan, but the assumption is
Drones.
It will be
Drones, floating drones.
Built per the previous waiver that was granted in terms of the number of poles and their placement.
Well, so here's a question for potential future agenda items, I think there was a good point. Four Hundred Main had story polls up for eighteen months for a project that's moving along very slowly. They have new story polls up that are more accurate based on the current proposal.
But there is not a current proposal, there is, they
It's a continuation.
It's a continuation where they ask to go back and make revisions.
Well, I hear you, I'm just pointing out that
Imagine if we had actual projects in our, on our main and State Street with these story polls, and we have one.
Imagine if there was more than one.
Which is a reflection of what people can do in that space.
Right.
Imagine if people could actually build in that area, what it would look like with story polls.
Well, if
So, I'd like to make the recommendation that we make that an agenda item for
That's exactly what I was
An upcoming meeting
I'd like to have story polls.
To talk about the story polls, because we really can't talk about it.
I'm, I'm saying, so, potential future agendas, I have story polls and the process of time elapsed, and Abby brought that up because she's across the street from it, she has to live with it. And then, another potential agenda item would be us discussing, proposing an ad-hoc traffic subcommittee to, for the city council, to look at schools and traffic around schools and work with adjacent
You do recognize that most of the traffic at schools happens to be the neighborhood?
Of course, because
Driving their kids
Neighborhood school, I hear you.
Driving their kids to that school and from that school.
But you know, you worked really hard to get kids walking and biking to school, and there has been an improvement there.
Oh, absolutely.
So, why do, why would we need a subcommittee? Isn't that what complete streets?
Yeah, that's what I was
Okay, well, I will withdraw that then.
I mean, we can make a recommendation that completes, or can we make a recommendation that completes, I mean, yeah.
This neighborhood, the one
Right, Oak and, Oak and Truman.
So, complete streets, that was my suggestion, a potential future agenda is complete streets vis-à-vis the Oak Street, Oak School area.
As chair of the planning commission, you could write a letter or memo to the chair of the Complete Streets Commission.
Oh.
There you go.
Ooh, she's empowered to act.
Boy, I'm good at letters.
Go for it.
Anybody else have any other items?
I would like to know
Okay.
Just because we've asked this in the past, and I've not heard the answer, we recommended on Lox to do some traffic calming, and there was going to be a count afterwards so that we could see if, what's the impact of that?
Which project was, this was the traffic calming on
The traffic
Lox, the half Lox.
A half of Lox, and I have never heard, did it work?